I think I'm here.
Hey Cory.
You hear me?
What? There's Colette, Julie. Wow, look at that fancy background Cory.
Yeah.
That's pretty, that's pretty big time.
Got a messy house behind me.
I had to come downstairs because Trent and Trice are upstairs. They're cooking supper, so I was like, I'll just come downstairs to avoid the cooking sounds. Like the olden days of Zoom back there.
Hi Troy.
Is it raining or snowing or anything there yet in town?
Uh, came through about quarter after five and it was, yeah, it's on the roads a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
Icy.
And you can hear it like starting to hit the windows here.
Mm-hmm.
Trent was coming home and he said the mailbox was already like covered in a coating of ice.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, well, at least we're home, safe and sound and everybody's tucked in. Debbie, was it bad coming home for you? Was it getting icy yet or anything?
Sorry, I was having trouble finding my mute. Um, it was just wet. Um, so no, not too bad.
Okay, good.
I just got home a few minutes ago, so yeah. Abby's hoping they don't have school tomorrow FYI.
I've got one of those in my own house that's been harassing me for two solid days.
I'm sure.
All right, well, I guess we're waiting on John, but Cory, we were Oh, is he?
Yeah.
Oh, there he is. Hey, John. Um, let's put you guys on, I guess, I just had a speaker. There we go. Um, what we had talked about was just doing the consent items and then really like tabling the principal's report, city work session, board work session, um, facilities ground, superintendent, and the closed session. We really just need to do the personnel, or actually Julie, we don't even have any personnel, do we? Or do we?
Open enrollment.
You
Yeah, open enrollment and then the bills and stuff. But I guess we should officially start and then we can amend it, so.
Yeah. Well, yeah, I guess it's six o'clock, so we can call a meeting in order. Um, so yeah, we've talked about the agenda. Let's go through and make sure we have the agenda items that we need. So we're going to table principals' reports, the city school work session. Um, I guess there's probably not a whole lot of the annual board work session, just kind of dates.
Yeah.
Preliminary, uh, we'll have to do open enrollment, correct?
Yep.
Personnel, there are some personnel in there, right? Contracts.
Is there? Oh, yep, we sure do. So we'll have to do those.
Yeah. And there's no facilities grounds, so we can match that. And do you want to hold on to the superintendent's report then?
I mean, I could, I could just briefly talk about it, but otherwise I could save it for next month. It doesn't, it doesn't really matter. Either way.
Then we'll, then yeah, we'll table the closed session for now also till we meet. Okay, so we have a motion to approve the agenda with open enrollment personnel and tabling the rest. So can I get a motion?
Some of.
Second.
Second.
All right, agenda is approved. Okay, well, shoo, we'll go right down through there. Oh, yeah, consent items, so I guess already had a chance to look through the consent items.
Only had one question, the two years, why did we buy two years worth of, um, oh, medallions for? Okay, can't hear Julie.
Julie, we can't hear you.
No.
It's been so long. Forgot how to zoom. No.
Mine must not be working. Okay, well. Not
Like microphone has messed up or something? Yeah, it doesn't show muted.
Yeah. How about if we follow up with you on that one, Colette?
It's fine.
Okay. That's fine.
And are there any other questions? Yeah, well, if there's no other questions on the assigned items, do we have a motion to approve the consent items?
So move.
A second?
Second.
Favor say aye?
Aye.
Say no? And I, and they're approved. Okay, so no principals' report, school work session, we'll talk about later.
And I can just mention, so you can get the date on your calendar if you'd want for the city school work session. Um, I believe it was April, April sixth. Um, gosh, I thought I had that in the notes, but
April fifth, Mike Lynn.
April fifth, okay, April fifth. So I've confirmed that with the mayor and so get that date on your calendar. And it'll be up at city hall this time. It's their turn to host it.
Is that typically at seven?
I think so. I think it's like seven to eight thirty.
Okay.
Look at my calendar. Oh, actually, it's at six Debbie, six to seven is what I have on the calendar. Um, I can confirm that for sure with Brian.
Okay, no problem.
Yeah. Like I said, I guess work session, probably just making sure we have the dates on the calendar and times.
Yep, and it's just corresponding dates to last year. Um, we'll do a Monday night and a Wednesday night. So it's February twenty seventh, five to nine, and then March first, five to nine.
Yeah.
The agenda's linked, we're still, it's just the old agenda and we've been working on it. But if there's anything specifically that you want to talk about, just let me know and we can change it. Um, I plan to have Wendy, she's trying to get her calendar to work so that she can come that first night and talk about some of the academic things with us. And then the second night, we do more of the budgeting.
Okay, I guess we'll go on down to open enrollment.
Okay, so we have a request from Brian and Karen Finch for their daughter Ashlyn to attend Baxter from the Newton School District. And she actually started though Monday, I believe. Um, with the new laws, she can open and roll anytime. And so she was a student in good standing and so it was a good fit for us. So she's, she's, I saw her in the hall today. So this is more just a FYI for you guys.
So, yeah, how was that? We don't need to approve them anymore or open enrollment in, we do need to approve?
Um, why don't you go ahead and approve it anyway, just so that it's officially approved? But I don't believe that you have to anymore.
Okay, so let's, uh, so open enrollment for Brian and Karen Finch for the daughter Ashlyn to attend Baxter from Newton. Do we have a motion to approve that?
Move.
I have a sec. All favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Enrollment is approved. Okay, so personnel, we have a couple contracts.
Yep, so we have, we need to approve a contract for Craig Hudson as the second shift custodian. And then for a joint uh, contract for Sammy Hoffman and Emily Snyder to share equally the drama sponsor for the high school play.
And that custodian was just from last month's resignation, right? So that got filled really
Yep, so it got filled and he's started with us and so far he's been a great fit. He came to us from, I believe he was um, a custodian or a maintenance director at Newton Hospital. So he's got some good experience and he's a super nice guy, so um, it's been a good fit for us.
Yeah. Any other questions from anybody?
I'll make a motion to approve the contract as presented.
I'll, I'll second.
Okay, motion and second, all of those say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Will say no. Contracts are approved. Okay, yeah, superintendent's report, exciting.
Yeah, just, yeah, you can take a look in the notes, but Julie and I met with some neighboring districts to talk about some sharing opportunities. Um, we're still considering some, but with operational sharing, you can share up to twenty-one positions or twenty-one full-time equivalent positions. And we're at twenty right now, so adding additional positions, while it'd be nice, it won't benefit financially a whole lot, but it's just something to think about and always keeping the doors open. So we're working, you know, looking around to see what's available. Um, and then we're, you know, looking at some staffing needs for next year. Uh, just trying to look at, as people uh, go to other districts or decide to retire, you know, what does that look like for us? And how do we need to refill those positions and just always trying to look at the most efficient way to do business? And then the calendar, we've been doing a lot of work on that. Um, we're really trying to get a lot of feedback from the staff on the calendar. So we've brought them a couple of options and then they took a survey and then they've given feedback and we're tweaking it again. And then I'm going to meet with like just a, an open session next week that anybody that wants to come in and visit with me after school can talk about ideas or whatever. We're just trying to make it the most efficient. Um, what we've decided, what we've figured out is that we really have missed having some full day PDs. You just really get some really, really good learning on those days. And so we're trying to find a nice balance between getting enough PD for the staff, but also not being overly burdensome, parents who have to try and find daycare if their kids are little. So we're just trying to find that sweet spot with the calendar, but really trying to get a lot of staff's input on it. So we'll bring that to you in the next, probably next month, so we can have more time to talk about it. And really, that's about it. There's just those dates on there, so just kind of be aware of those dates. And then we'll get together. I'll, I'll send like a, maybe a Google survey or something to find a date that works best for all of us to meet and talk about the stuff that we were gonna um, talk about in our close session. We can reschedule a new one. Hopefully next week, Julie and I will be going to a meeting on the thirtieth. Is it the thirtieth, Julie?
Yeah.
Thirtieth. Oh, now your sound works, so.
Oh, you can hear, yeah, we can hear you now. Sorry for the trouble.
No, no, that's all right. We're all out of practice on this. Um, and so anyway, we, we think it'd be really valuable for us to go to that first and get some hard numbers, get some real, because right now we're just kind of estimating. But after the thirtieth, we'll be able to have them, some facts. So we'll schedule something, probably that first week of February or last week of January, if that works for you guys, just kind of be checking your calendars. And we can uh, send an email or whatever and get back and forth to figure out a date to, to get that closed session scheduled or work session or whatever. That's about it. Anything else I'm forgetting, Julie, that we were going to talk about?
I don't think so, but to answer your question from earlier, Colette, the, um, the two years, we order two years at a time for the track medals and trophies. We just get a better discount or whatever when we order more than one year at a time.
Okay.
The majority of those, like the medals and things like that, those, I don't, if I remember correctly, they don't have like a year on them. So even if we were to not use them for one of the years that, like what we did with COVID, then we were just able to use it for an additional year.
Do you think we're okay not meeting next week?
Well, I mean, we could meet next week, but we'd probably be just kind of guessing. And if we wait like one more week, we'll know exact, exactly where we're at with the budget. We'll know, um, it, we'd have better data. It'd be, it'd be an estimate next week, seeing where we're at. But whereas we'd be after the thirty-first, because we don't have the file yet. We have to get that from the Department of Management and they won't, they haven't given it to us yet. So once we have that, then we'll just have the spreadsheet that has the actual where we're at and, you know, messing with tax rates or whatever, you know, seeing where we need to land. So, I mean, we could meet next week, but we'd have to meet again soon after that. So I would have been better just to wait a couple more days.
Okay.
Is that how you're feeling too, Julie?
Yep, yep. I think, I mean, we can do that. I mean, we can, we can, you know, run scenarios. I mean, we run scenarios, new ones every single day, you know, just talking it through and everything. But until I can get you some official numbers, I guess, you know, from the tax rates, um, I, if, we're going to have to have two meetings if we do that or two work sessions if we do that. If you look at the documents that I gave you previously, you know, you can gauge where we were, you know, ten, eleven years ago and where we are now and how it increased um, or decreased tax rates for people per thousand. And if we reverted that, where we would end up. But our taxable valuations have increased so much that I don't even think I could give you a, a good number to rely on.
Okay.
Hey Julie.
Yeah.
Um, kind of along that same line, I know we talked a few years ago about uh, insurance, employee insurance cost and that sort of thing. And at that time, I think some districts had, we pick up a portion of it or, or that. Do you know, is that true or, and if it is, I mean, can you get a feel from some surrounding districts as to like what that percentage is?
Um, so pretty much all of the districts that I know of, um, these, you know, that speak up when we're at our meetings, because insurance is an issue for everyone. So it tends to come up on a regular basis, but for the most part, they all pay the single portion um, as the district. And then if they want anything above that, then they make up the difference. The employee does. The district will play this, pay the single across the board. And then if they want anything above the thing, then the employee would pay that amount.
That's for, for administrators and teachers and everybody's the same.
Um, and administrators have a different package. Um, administrators, uh, for the most part, as part of one of their benefits, they can get up to full family paid for. Um, if that's what they so choose. Um, if they choose not to take it, they get a stipend that's less than what the premium would be. It's, it's at least half or less than half of what the premium, annual premium would be if they choose not to take any of the district insurance. I will tell you, you, some of those documents that I sent to you, we were talking about. Um, you saw some insurance information in there and we have put it out to bid. Um, we've talked about partial self-funding. Um, we've talked about fully self-funding. Um, we've talked about bringing in um, an HMO, um, option, which I anticipate that would be highly at the top of my recommendations. And as opposed to a PPO, which is what we are. Um, the differences are that um, as far as benefit wise, you wouldn't see, the employee wouldn't see much difference except for that they are required to doctor within Iowa. If they choose to go outside of Iowa, then the HMO doesn't provide coverage. Um, they could switch every year, you know, every year we have an open enrollment. And, you know, if you anticipated you had some issues, you know, coming down the pipe and that you felt that maybe you were going to need to go to Mayo or someplace like that for you could potentially start to a PPO. In addition to the HMO recommendation, my thought would be to, we would still pay the HMO level, but if somebody wanted the PPO version, they would just pay, that's, that would be like more the, I don't know, Cadillac version, I guess, if you were to look at it and they would just pay the difference um, to get that, that version of it.
How about the same question as far as, could you find out what the packages are for administrators and like surrounding schools?
Absolutely, yes.
Pretty, pretty standard that they get at least the self-coverage, but
Yep.
Maybe look at, see what the packages are, administrators and
Of course, of course. Um, so I can do it for active administrators and then I could do it for retired administrators. Would you like me to do that?
That'd be perfect.
And I can, the other two districts I worked at as an administrator before this, um, our package was pretty similar. It came with full family health insurance. And then depending on the districts, we had some additional benefits. Some paid for, um, like a fifty dollars a month for a cell phone. Um, and some paid for some of our investments and stuff. So there's just, it was pretty standard for the insurance, but then others had additional benefits beyond just the insurance. But that, that could be the three districts I've worked into, so I couldn't say, you know, other district. And then John just
Oh, oh, sorry.
No, I was just going to say, um, we've also reached out to a couple more companies to get quotes. So, um, I don't, we haven't got those back yet, have we Julie?
No, actually, uh, we just ran into a, a little snafu with the one that I was pretty positive with. So I, I just need to do a little more legwork with that. We were hoping that they would take our experiences um, from the last two and, uh, two and a half years. Um, but instead they need a census. So what I have a census is, um, who takes the insurance? Um, is it their spouse? Is it one kid? Is it two kid? Is it three kids? And I have to go through each one, each employee and list that out. So, so we haven't gotten anything back yet.
But it's three more, like the company we have and then three additional or two additional?
So far, just two additional, but I've only had the one actually respond after I've provided everyone with those experiences. It's pretty limited. Um, when you're not Blue Cross and Blue Shield in Iowa, it's pretty limited. Um, it's Aetna and it's United Healthcare. And it's Blue Cross and Blue Shield outside of the ICBA pool. And if you're in the ICBA pool and you have Blue Cross and Blue Shield, um, they have such a monopoly on it, you have to actually leave ICBA before Blue Cross and Blue Shield will quote you outside of the pool. Well, if I don't know what new rate is going to be, how do I want, how do I know that I want to leave ICBA? So it's a little tricky there in the hoops that we have to jump through. I also wanted to say that we did put out bids, uh, requests for proposals um, for our property insurance, building insurance, things like that. But just keep in mind that all of that comes from the management fund. That's not a general fund expenditure. So like your work comp, your building property, um, liability, vehicle, all of that stuff that's not health or dental insurance or life insurance comes from the management fund. And another thing on that, EMC has quite a monopoly on that. And so from what I've learned, it's really going to be more about our agent and how creative our agent is. So while EMC will give us a quote or, you know, provide us with the insurance premiums or, you know, what they are for each year. Apparently the agent can go back and, and negotiate for us and say, no, you can do a little bit better on the building insurance. They haven't really had any claims here. Or, you know, um, you know, they're getting the lowest rate possible on the work comp. You know, can't you lower that amount somehow or something like that? On how negotiable our agent can be apparently. And so, um, in that sense, um, we're looking at other agents.
So Julie, there's been some conversation this week about family insurance for staff. Like, are we in line with other areas in the district? Or what does, what does that look like? And, and can we talk about that maybe also when we meet in a couple of weeks or a week and a half?
Of course. So in line, do you mean by how much it costs or in line by what, uh, what benefit we provide?
Well, like, I guess probably what it costs mainly.
We're, we're way high, way high, because we have a lot of experiences and because, and by experiences, I mean, we have a lot of people who use our insurance. We don't have people who take the insurance but need very little of it. So how they gauge your insurance and your insurance rates is if you are using eighty to a hundred percent of the premiums that you're paying as a district, then you're probably going to stay pretty even with your insurance rate increases, right? Because you're, you're not overspending the premiums that, that you're being charged. For as long as I can remember, at least for six years, seven years, we're spending about thirty percent over our premiums. So we're paying, or we're spending a hundred and thirty percent of our premium value. So as, if we're, um, spending a thousand a year on our premiums or we're charging, the insurance is charging us a thousand dollars a year for our premiums, we're actually claiming thirteen hundred dollars a year in benefit in insurance to pay for our bills, which is what drives our costs higher. See what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So, um, yeah, we just, we just have a staff that requires the use of the insurance and well, they should be able to. It's, it's, that's what it's there for. But it's a bit of a catch twenty-two.
But wouldn't other districts be in the same boat? I mean,
Yeah, but it's just, it's the level of usage. So, um, in ICBA, ICBA is a pool. And they actually have, I believe it's like three categories in where you fall in how much of the premiums that you use or, you know, how much, um, how many claims you have or the cost of the claims that you have. And so they have a good, better, or, well, I should say a good, worse, or very bad. And we tend to fall into the very bad. We use our insurance benefits, claims over what we're paying for. Over what we're paying for.
So something to um, maybe help with that is, like you said before, looking at a different. Or uh, agents looking at different things for us or.
Yeah, so we have, so we've had some agents reach out, or we've reached out to agents or they've reached out to us. It's the time of year that everybody is bidding it, so usually they come out of the woodwork right this time of year wanting to bid our, our um, our insurance packages. And so those agents are going to United Healthcare and Aetna and asking, can you? What, what can you do for Baxter School and what, what would the cost of their premiums be if they were to go with your insurance company? In general, I would anticipate that um, they'll come in, I would like to think less. I don't know how much less because of, um, because of. The claims that I know are gonna be coming in if they haven't already. Um, so what those um, insurance companies look at is, you know, how, how often are we using? Uh, that insurance and, and what, how much are they having to pay for that insurance, pay the claims, you know? And, you know, we've had cancer issues and, you know, things and things like that. So we're really using above the amount of premiums. So when those insurance look to quote you, it's really a catch twenty-two, your insurance goes higher. So you wanna put out quotes, but then no one's gonna quote you a good quote because your insurance is higher, because you're using it, you know? So it's a little bit of a catch twenty-two, it's just, well, can you at least come in less than what we have now? I also explained to them that I don't want you to give me a bogus quote this year where it's just great, a great quote. And then you come back and smack me with a big one next year, and then we have to go through this all over again, you know, sort of a, you know, a, you know, we'll get your business. Good quote, and then we'll jack you for it later. Also, you can look at the type of coverage that you have, and that's what I was talking about, the HMO versus the PPO. Right now, we have a PPO where as long, i- if they're in, in network, you get excellent coverage. If they're out, out of network, then you're still getting very, very good coverage. You just may have to pay a little bit more for that. For example, if you go to your doc or a doctor that's in the PPO. Then you're paying a twenty dollar office visit versus if you go out of network, you're paying, or is not your doctor, like say. They refer you to somebody else who's not your regular, then you're gonna pay thirty-five dollars. Well, a thirty-five dollar office visit is still pretty darn good. Where, and that's the PPO version, where if you do an HMO version, you're still probably gonna be paying a twenty dollar. Or maybe in some instances, even a lesser co-pay, um, just because of the nature of the, of the package. But as, but they, those doctors have to be in Iowa. So let's say I came down with cancer or some, something that I wanted to go to Mayo for. If I have the HMO, I'm not gonna be able to go to Mayo and get it paid for by my insurance. That's gonna have to be all out of pocket.
And our, um, and our staff members treated, are they different from like administration? This is a question just on my own, that's not something that someone brought up to me.
No, tha- no, that's across the board, uh, we all have the same insurance package. Um, we haven't really offered an HMO before. It was either a pe- it was this package and you can take it at a single, a single plus one or a family. Now, we're looking at, you can still take a single, a single plus one or a family. But you can take, you can get an HMO. Which I, I would highly recommend that the district will probably pay the single portion of that. Because it'll be lesser, but you're still basically gonna get the same kind of coverage. It's just that you're having to deal with uh, medical personnel in Iowa. And if, but they can, we'll still keep the PPO package, the current package that we have. We just would pay the single amount of the HMO. And if that employee wanted the PPO package, they would just pay the difference to get that higher or that Cadillac version. Of the insurance and we have, as, go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say, but if they, if we went with the HMO option, then if somebody really wanted to purchase the family insurance for their family. It would be a lot more cost-effective, right, than the current, what we have now?
Well, I would, I would anticipate it'll be more cost-effective, I don't know what a lot is yet.
Okay.
Like to think that it's, it's gonna be great, but uh, you know me, I like to err on the side of safety. And so I'm just hoping that it's less, you know, I'm just hoping that it's less. But now that they've come back and said, well, we can't go just by your experiences, we're gonna need a census. Maybe that's a good thing, that they wanna see what our census says, that they're not only looking at the experiences, maybe that's gonna be a good thing, it's more work. But maybe it's gonna be a good thing in the end.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I was gonna say that EMC insurance is really about the only insurance company that. There are like, um, in the building. Property liability insurance area in the school industry, they're about the, they're like the Blue Cross Shield. Of Iowa in the health insurance industry, um, even though I'm getting a new agent, he's gonna go out and see if he can. Get better quotes, he's still going EMC to see if he can get us better quotes. In theory, our current agent should have been doing. So, and maybe he has and I just don't know it, and it's coming back the same amount and he's not getting anything. And so he just doesn't tell me about it, but I, I don't think that's the case. I think that um, may, we need a little more active insurance.
If, if and when we make changes to whatever it should be offered, when do they take effect? Is it with the contract, so like July one, is that when?
Yeah, our term is July one to Ju- uh, to June thirty. Um, however, this gets a little bit confusing when you're thinking about your own insurance. The deductibles and all that still work on the calendar year. We had a pretty high, actually, I'm gonna say, an excruciatingly high claim just this last spring. That is really going to hurt us no matter where we go. It's an anomaly and I hope that they look at it as an anomaly. Um, but it. It really threw our experiences out of whack by, oh, a difference of. Um, four hundred thousand dollars in one month, um, as far as claims go and what our insurance had to pay.
Anybody else, questions? Down on a good roll there, so.
Sorry, we have to end with the bad news.
I didn't wanna get too in-depth, but I just like to have as much information as we can when we start with our budgeting meetings, so.
Yeah, thanks for the information, just. Had some emails this week and, and I just, it's more for my relay images and thank you.
Sure. Yeah, we're, it's, it's time and we do this often, but it's, it's a good thing to just shop it and make sure we're getting the best price. Because insurance is crazy, it's so expensive. So if we can get a similar product for a lot less cost, that's, that's worth it to us. It's just money we can use for other things besides insurance premiums.
Yeah, thanks for the info. Okay, anybody else have anything then, I guess, at the end here?
First, you guys all saw the email from Sue and I attached the article she wants.
Oh, yeah, so I was gonna mention that, yeah, public forum part, yeah, everybody got Sue's email earlier.
Yeah, and she, she popped into school and we were able to um, scan it for her, so you guys could get a copy. And then she said, wish you all well, she'll be out until, I think, April, she's having some, some kind of surgery, I can't, knee, maybe, she said. So.
Okay, well, oh. Yes, if there's nothing else anybody think of, we have motion adjourned.
So moved.
Do you have a second? I'll be right.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion is, your motion approved, meeting is adjourned at six thirty-seven.
All right, everybody stay safe.
All right.